...to do anything other than move forward in good conscience with the same things that we have told the community we value, I would think would be moving forward not in good faith. All the values I held before the election are the same values I hold now and you can expect to see me act on those in the upcoming year. And I think you can expect to see a board that will work together to do so. I would like to put this issue behind us. I think to do so is going to take something that addresses the mistrust that now has come, let me just say from your actions, Mr. Olson. What that is at this moment, I don't know. I would be happy to discuss that with you. I'll repeat what I said at the beginning. I would prefer that this board not take any further action on this item. That is, of course, not my decision to make. If there were a motion to do so, this board would entertain that motion. But I would prefer that we move forward, move onward in good faith, discuss these items in a serious and adult manner and see if we can find a way to do what's best for our district in what is a very difficult challenge in front of us. Any further comments at this time?
I would enjoy meeting with you, like you suggested.
Be happy to do so.
Great idea. Great idea.
Happy to do so. Any other comments? All right. Hearing none, we have a very full agenda otherwise, so we will move on to the next agenda item. The next agenda item is a proposed agreement between ISD 656 and Local 70 Paraprofessionals, item 11B.
And I can speak to that real quickly. The negotiations, this is the final negotiations, their contract was up July 1st, so we've been going through the negotiations process. It falls within the parameters that the board has set and we are recommending approval for the contract for the paraprofessionals.
Questions or comments from the board at this time?
I got two comments, you know, since the levy failed and looks like that we might be approving a raise for the paraprofessionals, I have a problem with that.
I can ask the pairs if they would take a pay freeze, but I don't know if that's going to happen right now.
Yeah, and I have a problem with that. We got wonderful paraprofessionals. I know they helped my son get through school, so I have no, you know, except good things to talk about with paraprofessionals. But with the levy failing, I think we have to be financially responsible and not approve this contract. Then the second point that I would like to go through the contract point by point. What are the changes? What are the changes?
Do you have any specific questions about the changes?
No, I'd like to go through the, you know, the whole, the whole contract.
And, Mr. Board Chair, we can go ahead and go through that if that's what you'd like to do.
You know, I think if you have questions about it, Mr. Olson, you have five days to look at it, so if you have any questions, but I think...
I don't, yeah, I don't have it for...
I've looked at it and it's fairly standard thing, so if you have any concerns, certainly...
The main point is, of course, the increase in pay.
Yeah. I still would like to go through the entire contract.
I think if you have questions, please ask them, but I'm not gonna, we're not prepared to go through the contract point by point, so I'm not gonna ask the superintendent to do that. But certainly, we're happy to answer any questions you have. You've had plenty of time to look at the contract. If you have concerns, we'd be happy to address those.
Okay, I still state that we, I'd like to go through the entire contract.
Okay.
For the, for the public.
Let me see if I can help you a little bit. Do you want to go through, just to start out with?
What are the changes?
Okay.
What are the, not, you know, what, what they, you know, said, hey, we're gonna keep, but...
Nicole, is there a, do we have a summary of, I'm just, we have a lot of minor changes in there and major changes, and we also have pay changes in there, but let's listen to what Nicole has first and then based on what she has for the changes, then maybe that'll suit with some questions.
The memorandum that's in your board agenda packet lists out every single change that's on, that's proposed for the new contract. Every single language item is in that memo. I put the article number, the new language, and any strikeouts for any language that was being omitted from the contract. Any new language is underlined and italicized for you to see.
Any other questions about the contract or thoughts or discussion? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
What's it? Okay, go ahead.
Is there a motion to approve or...?
I support.
A motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any further questions or comments on this item?
What is the bottom line contract settlement money?
Year one is $61,318. Year two is $69,516.
What's that breakout per person, per pair?
For year one, it's $491. Year two, it's $556. That's total compensation, which includes everything, not just salary, but benefits as well.
That's per year?
Per year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion on this item?
So, is, am I reading this right? Is it a 1% increase this year and 0.85% increase next year?
Yes, year one is 1% on the salary, the hourly wages, and then year two is 0.85% increase on the hourly wages.
Mr. Chair, how do we pay for this? Two general question or...
Mr. Olson, I guess we, this was in our budget, I think our budget forecasts have had this in there in the same way that it was for all the other contracts.
Nicole, could I ask you, in the end, you talked about comparative worth pay, equity wage adjustment, what's that all about?
I'm sorry, what was that?
What's that comparative worth adjustment all about?
Sure. Basically, state law requires all public jurisdictions such as schools, counties, city employees to oblige by what they call pay equity comparable worth law, which goes back many, many, many years. Basically, it says you pay, your pay needs to be equal, equal pay for equal positions. So now we have, and in the memo, you'll see our class, our special education classification paraprofessionals are compared to our educational assistants, which have the same job responsibilities. They're both working in the same classrooms with the same kids every single day. And, excuse me, what we found was the educational assistants were paid roughly a dollar more per hour than our paraprofessionals every single day. So where, what we're finding is when this information gets submitted to the state, to the state, we could be considered out of compliance because it's equal pay, it's not equal pay for equal positions. Now, if we're found out of compliance, there are hefty fines that we would get penalized by, excuse me, looking at the statute today, the fine was, the fine states that it's 5% of our general aid, general education aid, which our general education aid is roughly 28 and a half million dollars. So 5% of that is about 1.4 million dollars that we would get fined for being found out of compliance with the state. They would withhold that money from us and we wouldn't get it back. It'd be a penalty, would just go away.
Did they give you any warning first?
Yes, they give you a warning. So basically, we have to submit our information every three years. Our next reporting cycle is January 2014. So once our information is submitted to the state, they review it and determine whether or not we're in compliance. Now, if we're found out of compliance, they, the state, the legislature or the state department gives you so many days, they give you a timeline on how long you have to fix it. And you can, there's a lot of different things you'd have to do, such as if you, if you have a contract that's closed, you'd have to figure out how to reopen that contract and renegotiate it or change your pay, pay at that point in time. So it's, it's much more efficient for us to be ahead of the game rather than being found out, out of compliance.
Is it retroactive?
No.
The pay?
No, the compliance, no, it is not.
How many EAs do we have?
I want to say we have eight, just a handful.
Few years ago, were we trying to phase them out?
Yes, we're dissolving that union, so now we do not hire any new ones. So when one retires or resigns, then we replace them with a paraprofessional.
Okay, so you're trying to bring all the rest of the pairs up to the EA schedule?
Yes.
When, when we had a chance a few years ago of eliminating that union or subgroup? There was talk of that.
Yep. Colleen, can I have you just address it too? And I, I know that we're, we're trying, I don't know, the hard thing is we don't know how that changeover is going to, or when that's going to happen, so there's two things...
It's under the Stefani Act that they were...
Yep, we're trying to phase, phase that union out.
Phase them out and, and, but they kept it. I know there's a vote again to keep them. It was a close vote, I think it was like four, three.
It's a continuing contract at this point and as the bargaining, as Nicole indicated, as those bargaining unit members resign or retire, we're not replacing them. But several of them are very young and could work in the district for another 15 or 20 years, so it could be quite a while before that contract is phased out.
Okay, but why are they bringing the wages up to EAs from all the rest of the pairs? Because we've got a lot of pairs.
We're out of compliance, and if you're out of compliance, you have one of two choices. You either bring a bargaining unit down or you bring another bargaining unit up, and it's very difficult, as you know, to reduce wages in a contract.
I still don't understand, you know, with the, with the pairs, how many pairs do we have?
About 120 or so.
So 120 have to be brought up to EA schedule?
No, no, they didn't all come up to that. It's just the one classification, our special education paraprofessionals.
Just, okay.
Because it's, all the job dis, there are many different job descriptions within that pair unit, I don't know, six or eight, 10, and those job descriptions are what get rated on comp worth and have the comparable worth points, and it's just the special education paraprofessionals that line up with the points of the educational assistants.
And maybe clarification too, are we allowed to arbitrarily tell bargaining groups not to negotiate?
No.
And what's a, what's a reason for that? That's right.
Well, there's a public law, the Public Employment Labor Relations Act, I think we've talked a little bit about it here before, but we are required to negotiate with our employees. And that law recognizes that in public education, you're at a little bit of a disadvantage because of the service you provide, much like we're not considered an essential service like police or firefighters, but we're very close to that. So the law states that we must negotiate with our employees. We don't have a choice. And we must negotiate in good faith.
So how much an hour are we talking about change here? I see in the end you've got it for that last five, but basically, what are we talking about per hour change?
Yeah, it's from the 1358 that you see under current pay for 1213 on step one, do you see that?
Mm-hmm.
And then the proposed adjusted would go to 1456 for step one. So each step has that increase, and then the next year, the step one goes from 1370 to 1468.
So it's about a dollar an hour?
In the first year, yes.
And 80 cents in the last year.
Yes.
Is that for all the pairs?
Just the special ed paraprofessionals. Again, they're the ones whose job description has the same comparable worth as an educational assistant.
Are those the highest paid ones or...?
Um, I, no, because we have nurse pairs, media pairs, so they're kind of the middle of the pack, kindergarten pairs. I think we have eight different classifications in the pair contract.
So can I just blatantly ask, why do you think this is a wise decision to approve this?
Well, as Nicole indicated, every three years, we have to file what's called the pay equity report with the state to comply with the state law that says that we have to pay equal wages for equal work and not only for that, but for between male and female dominated classes. The last time we filed, we were very close to being out of compliance in this area and we did just a couple of minor things to report that so that we fell into compliance, so we knew full well that this was going to be an issue we needed to deal with. We also went through our job evaluation system. If you remember, we hired Springstead and we went through that whole process of developing job descriptions and re-looking at all of our comp worth points to make sure that we had everything in compliance. So once we went through that, we knew we would have to look at this and see, look, take a look again at the areas where we're out of compliance. And as Nicole indicated, you know, when you file that pay equity report, you do have to get into compliance or that fine is pretty hefty. So they take, the state takes this very seriously.
And the other thing I hear is that needing it the same is not an option.
Absolutely not. I mean, unless you want to start paying that fine of 5% of your state aid for every day that you're out of compliance, so.
Also...
Don't think we want to do that because you don't get that money back.
But also, I heard you said they didn't think they'd settle for this.
Well, that, this is not something that's negotiable. Comp worth adjustments aren't, aren't part of negotiations.
So if we don't approve it, we, we run the risk of...
Being out of compliance.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, we've got a full agenda and I'm gonna approve, move that we approve this action to accept this contract.
And do we call a question or you...
Did we have a motion?
We have a motion, yes. We have a motion and a second.
Oh, okay.
So you were just trying to make a motion?
Uh, let's see, probably no need to call the question.
No. Any further discussion? All right, Mr. Clerk, if you would please do a roll call.
Richard Olson?
No.
Jason Ingrid?
Aye.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Tom Casper?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Mr. Chairman, the result of the vote is 4-1.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the approval of the Fairbough High School ban on orchestra spring trip. And I think we have some representatives here to tell us about that.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to introduce you again, Mr. Edelson, our new orchestra director, who's gonna be with me and the rest of the students on the trip. We are planning, saying six years ago, a trip to the Denver area. We would leave the Friday before spring break and come back on the Tuesday during spring break. I believe you have the agendas and financial breakdown in the packet. The one thing I did include in the packet that I wanted to make sure to tell you is about the fundraising efforts that we do so that all students have accessibility to the trip. Right now, 66% of our students do fundraise quite a bit of their trip. We do fundraising, we're working with the QuickTrip Corporation right now, doing gift carts, car washes, and Glazer coupons. We're also selling some chocolate candy bars, and we have the butter grates coming up in the spring. Right now, we have a total of about $5,922 raised, that right now makes 17% of the total trip. We still have about six months before we go, so there's a pretty big fundraising effort to go. Most of our students who don't go are taking a more special vacation with their families over spring break. So we make it very accessible, it's very educational everywhere we go, so we'd ask for your approval. I can answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
I just, I was gonna just comment too, we, you asked me last time to look up the policy to see where this falls with the board's responsibility, and it does say any extended trips that involve students must be approved by the school board, so it's part of our purpose.
Thank you.
Looks like a lot of work on your part, so I commend you for that.
They all bought candy bars too.
Grates are awesome. Gift cards are a great gift idea for the holidays.
I'm sure Deb will bring those to me.
I do have them in my purse.
Any further questions? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you guys very much, we appreciate it. You're fair kids. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All right. Mr. Clerk, if you would please do a roll.
Richard Olson?
Yes.
Jason Ingrid?
Yes.
Deb Davis?
Yes.
Tom Casper?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Mr. Chairman, the result of the vote is 5-0 in favor.
Next on the agenda is the curriculum committee. It appears we have a report.
Good evening. I will just make a real brief update on the meeting that we held tonight. This meeting tonight was held to discuss our curriculum meetings that we had in October. We kind of talked about the fact that we had meetings that lasted an hour and a half in science, social studies, math, and language arts. We updated the committees on the curriculum cycle, hopefully a new cycle that we'll be proposing to you soon, looked at our standards, and looked at our K-12 curriculum alignment. We also then went on to discuss our summer programming. I brought Anne Marie in to discuss what we did in the past for summer programming and what we're going to be looking at in the future. So we brought that committee together to discuss, you know, what, what did they like about the past summer programming and what things might we want to add at the same time, staying within the budget that we have that has been allotted in that programming? And so we took a real quick look. Tom, do you want to add anything about the summer programming? Is that...
No, I thought it was very thorough and informed discussion. Thank you.
Okay. And then just to also let our curriculum advisory committee know that this Wednesday, as you know, our 612 staff will be meeting and we're going to be talking about the alignment, about the transition from middle to high school, about our standards, and in the afternoon, looking at our common assessments and curriculum writing overall. And so that's just a real brief update, but that is what is happening in our committee. Questions or... Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the policy committee. You have minutes in front of you. We have a number of policies for first reading. Does someone from the policy committee want to comment on those in any fashion?
Most of them, we, or part of them, we brought back from our previous meeting in October. All of them, the new ones are just language changes due to statutes.
Any questions or comments on these items? As board members know, these items will be back on our agenda presumably next month for a second reading and for board approval. Okay, hearing no more questions, we'll move on to the approval of the following policies for second reading. Let me get to that item. We have policy 101, legal status of the school district, and policy 306, administrator code of ethics. We had these items in our policy, or in our agenda last month for our first reading. Questions or comments on these items? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve both of them at the same time.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve policy 101, the legal status of the school district, and policy 306, administrator code of ethics. Any further comments on these items?
Second.
We need a second.
We didn't have a second, sorry, I got ahead of myself. We have a motion and now we have a second. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Our motion and now a second to approve the policies that I listed earlier. Any further questions, comments, or discussion? Right. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We now move on to the finance item of our agenda. You have the minutes in front of you. Mr. Olson, it's my understanding that you were in attendance, would you like to give us a point?
Yeah, yeah, I was just gonna add my name. Could you, I was there, November 13th.
Go ahead, the minutes, sorry.
The minutes, I was there.
Oh.
Because I made motions and, you know.
Oh, okay, I will maybe that gets corrected. Yeah.
And talked about quite a few items, in fact, we'll be talking about in Sedesco and other items like change orders, I think, Kevin? Kevin's, yeah, there he is, the change orders to, some of the last change orders, right, Kevin? Of the, of the project, so it's, and we talked about the budget reduction list too. So next meeting, December 10th, District Office, 7:30 a.m.
All right. First on the agenda, under item 9B, is under 9B1, the approval of the 2012-2013 concurrent enrollment agreement with South Central College. South Central College, any comments, Mr. Superintendent?
It's really the same thing we've been doing for a long time. It's mainly Larry Gavin's AP course, and we just pay a fee for that concurrent program. I'm sorry. If you can hear me. It's concurrent program and we use, we pay it every year, it's the same type of fee that we pay for kids to get college credit for, in particular, AP composition.
All right.
And the cost compared to last year?
All right, any further questions on this item? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the 2012-2013 concurrent enrollment agreement with South Central College. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next, approval of the 2012-2013 Sedesco revised contract. Any comments to be made on this item? What's revised about the contract?
Could somebody explain that? Yeah, it's, it's not much.
Last spring, we put out bids for the food service contract as we're required to do every three years, and you recall that Lori Deal came last spring too and talked about the new food service requirements by the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act? I'm not getting that right, I can't remember the acronym to that, but that's the federal law and all of our reimbursements are mostly federal. So one of the things that we didn't know at the time were the standards that they were still revising over the summer, so the Department of Education, who approves all our food service contracts, gave us two choices. They said you can assume things are the same and negotiate a contract based on that, and then when the requirements are finalized and the provider has the menus in place, we'll approve the menus, and then the department, the federal department or the federal government is going to increase the reimbursements by six cents. If you want, you can put something in your contract that deals with that at that time because we understand that fresh fruits and vegetables and whole grains do cost more, that's why the reimbursement went up. And so we could have put something in the contract at that time that said, when this goes into effect, if everything's approved, we'll pass that on, or you can revise your contract when that all happens. And we chose to wait and revise the contract just to make sure that everything is going through. So the menus have all been submitted and approved by the Department of Education, the six cents has come through effective October 1st, so the contract revision is to increase the reimbursement to Sedexo by six cents per meal. So it's no cost to the district in that regard.
Okay, thank you, Colleen. Any questions or comments on this item?
Are we buying locally the food, pretty much?
As much as we can.
Is it organic or not? Is it organic?
I don't believe so. I don't know, I, I don't quote me on that because I don't know, but I know that she buys Bushel Boy products and I think there's one other vendor that...
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and this time a second to approve the 2012-2013 Sedesco revised contract. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item, the 2012, 2011-2012 audit report. Do we, did we take long enough?
We do have the auditor here, yes.
We do have the auditor here?
Yes. And no speeding tickets, I don't think. Kim, were you here last year? Okay, so this is Kim Hildor from Larson Allen, and she is the, that's, she's the partner at the firm. Okay, so this is Kim Hildor from Larson Allen, and she is the, that's, she's the partner at the firm, the, not the partner, but, yeah, okay, partner at the firm that manages our audit with Larson Allen. And then Andy Lobbs, I'm gonna let her stand up here with Kim too. She's our controller, and she is the one that spends about, um, I don't know, six months of her life working on the audit. It's a big task to undertake to go through the audit, so I'll let them take it from here.
Good evening, thank you for having me here. I'm, I'm gonna go through audit results, uh, primarily a PowerPoint presentation, but before I get into that, there are a few things that I just wanna run through in terms of, of summary results of the audit. Uh, the first of which is we issued a clean or an unqualified opinion on the financial statements as we have in the past. So, that means that your financial statements are what we as auditors say are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Uh, we had two material weaknesses this year, the fact that we prepare your financial statements and our related footnote disclosures, and we had just a handful of audit adjustments that we proposed as a result of the audit. And really, when we think about a district this size, to come away with just a couple of tweaks to the account balances when we're auditing, I, I think it says a lot about the staff that you have on hand and the work that they do throughout the year to get everything ready for us when we come in and do the audit. So, uh, they, they do a very good job for you. Uh, we took a look at three programs for the federal part of the grant, the, uh, grant audit this year. We took a look at Title One, uh, special education, as well as a child nutrition cluster, and, uh, had a couple of minor recommendations in terms of fine tuning the controls that you already have in place, but nothing, uh, to indicate that money was misspent or mismanaged at all. Uh, and then in terms of Minnesota legal compliance, we are required to take a look at compliance with seven different areas of state statutes. Uh, the Office of the State Auditor requires us to do this as part of our audit work, and, uh, we did not have any findings there, so we're giving a clean report on that. The student activity funds, uh, are actually a separate audit, all unto themselves, and they do have a separate set of financial statements, uh, that would be included with a bound copy of your financial statements as all, as well, we are, uh, issuing a qualified opinion on that because they are actually presented on a regulatory basis of accounting required by MDE. So, it's not that you're doing anything inappropriate in terms of reporting or accounting for those activity funds, it's just that MDE wants these funds to be recorded, reported in a particular format, and it just doesn't happen to follow generally accepted accounting principles as all. So, with that, I'm gonna move to the PowerPoint presentation for this evening. And the first, uh, PowerPoint slide that we have is, uh, summary results of the general fund, the, for the year. In total, your general fund went up about one point four million dollars to an ending balance in total for the year of about eight point nine million dollars. Now, I'm gonna talk about several different components of your general fund, fund balance. Uh, the first of which is capital-related restricted fund balances, uh, those being health and safety and operating capital. Uh, now, I'm gonna talk about those a little bit more detail, uh, in a couple slides, uh, later on in the presentation. The non-capital-related restrictions that you have in your general fund pertain to revenue streams that come from the Minnesota Department of Education, that if they go unspent by the end of the year, they are required to be set aside to be used for future fiscal years. And of the about thirty-four thousand dollars that you've got in there, that pretty much is staff development dollars to be used, uh, for subsequent fiscal years. And then last but certainly not least is a category that we call unrestricted fund balance, and that is made up of several different components of fund balance. Uh, your unrestricted fund balance in total is about eight point nine million dollars, and of that, two hundred and ten thousand is non-spendable. So, that means that it's in a non-spendable form in your general fund, namely prepayments that were made, uh, prior to the end of the fiscal year that pertain to next fiscal year. You've got some committed fund balance that is set aside for particular purposes for future years. And anytime when you have fund balance set aside for particular purposes, I think it just shows good financial planning on your part and recognizing that sooner or later you're gonna have these expenditures come up and, and you're setting something aside so that you're able to meet those obligations in the future. And then you also have about four hundred and six thousand dollars of assigned fund balance related to the fitness center, uh, which I understand is pretty much complete now as we speak. So, the remaining balance is about five point seven million dollars, and our next slide shows that unassigned fund balance of a little over five point seven million dollars, along with the historical, uh, trend for that particular fund balance. If we do the math, that is about fourteen point three percent of your total general fund expenditures for the year. And as auditors, we recommend, as a general rule of thumb, a minimum between eight and sixteen percent. So, you're right in the middle. Uh, one thing to keep in mind with fund balance, especially with the economy that we're in now in the state of Minnesota, is that it's important to have a cushion. Uh, we are working in an environment with a tax shift. The state is not paying you all of your state aid in the current fiscal year, and they're withholding more each year. And then we also haven't seen any significant increases to the general education formula in quite some time. Uh, so, all of this is really lending itself to districts needing to have a healthy general fund, fund balance to be able to make it through this tough economic time until tax shift eventually goes away. Uh, we start seeing some increases to the formula and whatnot. Uh, unfortunately, I think that's gonna take some time. We, uh, don't see things turning around quickly for the state in terms of its finances, and, uh, since so much of what happens to me depends upon what happens to them, uh, it's gonna be a little while, and that's why it's so important to have that healthy general fund, fund balance. The next slide is the restricted fund balances, and these are non-capital. And like I mentioned earlier, this is your staff development set aside that was money, uh, given to you by the state for that particular purpose that had gone unspent at the end of the fiscal year to be used for next fiscal year. Operating capital fund balance is next. This is one of those capital fund balances. Uh, you can see, it, it took a, a decrease here in two thousand and twelve related to some technology updates that you had done. Uh, otherwise, um, everything is looking fine with your operating capital.
Kim, can you tell us what page that you're looking on?
Uh, page eleven of your executive audit summary is, the bottom of that is your operating capital. Flip along with the page numbers.
Oh, this is a little bit different, I've got, did you get that one?
I've been, I'm just following it over there.
Okay. Keep, I'll find it.
Okay, sorry about that. Uh, the next one is the operating cap, uh, sorry, health and safety fund balance. And as you can see, this one can have a bit of a roller coaster effect, really, depending upon where the district is at, project versus levy cycle. Uh, you have a really unique situation going on here, uh, with two thousand and twelve and, uh, actually two thousand and eleven as well. And you, you had a alternative facilities project that was actually approved but never made it onto your levy. Uh, and as a result, you did not get the revenue, uh, pertaining to that. So, what is gonna happen now over the next three years is you have levy authority to recover that deficit. So, even though you're seeing a deficit now in the health and safety fund in two thousand and twelve, it is something that you do have future levy authority for, to be able to bring itself back to a break even point with that. Your food service fund balance is the next fund balance that we're looking at this evening. And, uh, as you can see, that one continues to be healthy as well. Uh, as auditors, we do like to see this one being, this program being self-supporting and, uh, maintaining a fund balance. Otherwise, the general fund is the one that has to subsidize those operations. Uh, it, the nice thing with, uh, food service fund balance now is that you no longer have to seek approval from MDE to be able to spend it on capital needs, if you have any capital needs related to your food service program. So, that requirement has now gone away, and, uh, you're free to spend that out of your food service fund so long as you have a, a positive fund balance in there.
What's the limit done?
Uh, the state recommends no more than three months' worth of operating expenditures in there, and they determine a year in the food service fund to be nine months, as opposed to twelve, because that program is actually only operating nine months out of the year.
So, I saw we'd like seven hundred and seventy-two thousand. Can we go up to that amount again or not?
Uh, you can, I have to do the math on that, to be quite honest. It, uh, what happens is there's really no penalty when the state sees that if you were to exceed that, you might get a letter saying it's high, uh, and probably encourage you to do something in your program to, uh, either, they say, uh, capital, or to improve the quality of the, the food within the program is really what they recommend as a means to spend on fund balance at that time. Community service fund balance is next. Uh, this one operates on the same idea as your food service fund. We like to see it self-supporting. Uh, the trick with your community service fund, though, and this is gonna be the last year for this being two thousand and thirteen, uh, is that there's a fine line between having fund balance and having so much as to create some negative levy adjustments in that particular fund. So, districts are constantly kinda straddling the fence in terms of, do we have enough fund balance versus do we have too much, we, we don't want it taken away from us, that kind of thing. Uh, and two thousand and thirteen is actually the last year that they will be looking at negative levy adjustments in this particular fund.
So, after two thousand and thirteen, we, we won't have to worry about negative adjustments? That's what you're saying? Okay.
Yeah, yep, they, they won't be measuring your, your ending fund balance after two thousand and thirteen.
How does a negative levy...
What they do is they, there are several different components of your community service fund balance, and what they do is they say for that particular, uh, area, let's say, uh, ECFE, they say if your fund balance exceeds twenty-five percent of your revenue related to that program, that excess then comes in the form of a reduction in your levy authority and/or a state aid adjustment. Uh, so, that's kinda their way of saying, "You've got too much here, we're gonna help you bring it back down." And by help, I mean, take money away so that it, it works its way back down. Uh, districts really don't like the, the state stepping in to do that. I think, uh, a lot of districts in a mean, in, in a way to be able to control that fund balance would much rather spend the money on things that they would be able to use or that they need as opposed to the state reducing levy authority for them.
And we still always have the option of doing that manually, is to go into the levy system and if we wanna put a negative adjustment, we can do that, but that can be a local board decision to do.
That's correct. Yep, whereas the, the state, when they, they make that adjustment, there is no local decision. That's, that's the state coming in and, and, uh, making that adjustment onto you.
And the logic behind that is, on their, from their point of view is what?
Uh... The way they see it is that it's almost an, an excessive accumulation of fund balance and to try to save the taxpayers' money, uh, to help bring that down, give them some relief in terms of negative levy adjustments.
And they're giving us the money, so they want us to spend it.
Yep. Uh, in a way, when you really think about it, I, I, I believe it almost encouraged wasteful spending to a certain extent, in, in an attitude to try to spend it to get rid of it, as opposed to, "We may need it later on down the road, so let's hold on to it until we do need it." Capital projects fund balance is the next category. You can see here, your, your bond issue that took place in two thousand and nine. The proceeds have been continually spent down, and, uh, two thousand and twelve, we're left with about two point six million dollars in that particular fund. Debt service fund balance is next, and as you can see, two thousand and twelve had, had a bit of an increase to it. Uh, the reason being is you went through a bond refunding this year, and, uh, that bond refunding has actually not taken place quite yet. It's, it's two phases. So, of that six point four million dollars, you have about five point five million dollars sitting in an escrow account in a bank, waiting to pay off that old debt. Uh, when that occurs, then the cash will go out and your fund balance will drop down to what would be a more typical level for you. Uh, so, it's something to just keep in mind when you look at that six point four million dollars. Know that about five and a half million is set aside for refunding some debt.
Can I just ask, when did we refinance those bonds?
It was last March.
Last March, and how much did we, do you remember how much we saved?
Uh, I think it's, I, no, I'm not gonna...
Okay, do you remember, Kim?
It wasn't significant, I mean...
Sorry. Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
They measure, uh, the way the bond companies do is they, they measure it in terms of an economic savings is what they, they call it, and, uh, their calculation ended up being about five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars is what they estimated.
Yep, saved on taxpayer.
Yeah, yep. Five hundred dollars, yep, yep.
Are the days of refinancing done, pretty much?
You know, it's kinda funny, because we, whenever we get asked that, we always say, "Interest rates are about as low as they can get," and then they continue to drop. Uh, I have a lot of clients, school districts and other clients, that are refinancing just because interest rates continue to be so low. So, I, I, I think it, that, um, entities that haven't refinanced for quite some time or issued debt a number of years ago that are now, that's now eligible for refinancing, I think everybody's taking advantage of it to, to lock in at that lower interest rate. General fund revenue pie chart is the next slide that we have, and, and this summarizes the revenue sources for your general fund, uh, by category. And you can see the vast majority of it, almost eighty percent of it comes from the state. So, you're really very, very dependent upon state funding in that general fund, and any change that they make in terms of how much they fund you or how they fund you, whether it's through the tax shift or, uh, decreasing the amount of state aid that they pay you in a current year, uh, is gonna have a significant impact on that general fund. All the more reason to have a healthy fund balance there as well. Uh, your weighted average daily membership is next, so these are your seat counts that are weighted by grade level. You can see you had a nice bump up in Wadums here between two thousand and eleven and twelve. Uh, just to give you an idea, your seat counts at the end of June thirty, two thousand and twelve, were just a little over thirty-nine hundred, to give you an idea. The next series of graphs that we have are all expenditure graphs. Uh, the two thousand and twelve column is based on the audited financial statements themselves. Uh, the two thousand and eleven through two thousand and eight columns are for your district, uh, that is information obtained from the Minnesota Department of Education's website for those respective years. Uh, the two columns on the far right-hand side are there for comparative purposes, and the one on the far right is the state average, so that includes all districts in the state of Minnesota. And the one right next to it would be districts of similar enrollment size, so your peer group, if you will. One thing to keep in mind as we look through this, these series of graphs, uh, there is a lot of latitude in terms of how districts code expenditures. I, I think MDE would like to say that their, their coding methodology is quite black and white, but when you really get down to it, there is a lot of gray in there, and I think, uh, Colleen and Andy would, would very much agree with that as well. Uh, the two comparative columns on the far right-hand side, you're gonna see are two thousand and eleven. And the reason being is that we are still working on two thousand and twelve information, finalizing that for audit, and the state is still collecting that, and that actually won't be available until next spring. So, two thousand and eleven information is the best available that we have for comparative purposes. With that being said, uh, the first graph is district and school administration and support services. The next graph that we have is regular instruction. That's where the bulk of your K-12 dollars are spent, with the exception of vocational instruction and special education instruction, instruction. Those are carved out, uh, for separate slides. Vocational instruction is next, and, uh, you can see here, it, it, it's really hard to do comparative as well, not only because of the, the coding, but also in terms of what districts offer for the various classes in this particular area. And, uh, also whether your instructio- instructors are actually licensed in this particular area can determine if they're coded here or if they're coded in regular instruction instead. Special education instruction is the next category that we're looking at. And one thing that's very unique with your district is that you tend to attract some high-needs kids. And, uh, a lot of that is really beyond your control. Uh, you are to provide education for those children that walk through your doors, and, uh, you, you offer a level of services, quite frankly, that other districts don't. So, it, it is very much an attraction, uh, for, uh, children of higher needs to come and, and get that education here. Instructional support services is the, is the next category. Uh, that includes things such as your media center. Uh, staff development gets included here, as well as your integration. And not all districts have integrations, so really, kinda what we look at, uh, is the difference between you and, and others in that category.
Can I just ask, could someone remind you what the integration number is? Somebody happen to know?
The budget on that is anywhere from four hundred and fifty thousand to six hundred thousand. And we're allotted so much per student, and then every year Cheryl and her team come up, and we have to meet with Waterville, and we have to set the budget and the goals for the program.
So, that's gotta be roughly a hundred dollars a student, so that explains much of the difference that we see there.
Pupil support services is next. This includes things such as social workers, guidance counselors, counselors, psychologists, and school nurses. Transportation is the next category, and this... Transportation is the next category, and this includes not only transportation for regular transportation, but also special education. And that has been seeing an increase now in the past couple of years in terms of special education costs for transportation.
Is that why I was arguing?
And just a couple of other things, we do transport all the charter schools in our district. So Near Strand, Discovery, STEM, and we also provide transportation to the state academies too. So we're a little bit higher because of the unique populations we have here in Perrinville and all the parochials.
Operations, Maintenance, and Other is the next category of expenditures per ADM. And these costs are associated with running and maintaining your facilities. It is not your capital outlay for your facilities, but merely what it takes to run and maintain those. Capital Expenditures are next, and this is just that whatever you spend in terms of capital outlay each year, regardless if it was to purchase some classroom items, facilities-type stuff, that all gets carved out of each area and included in this capital expenditure slide. Food Service is the next slide that we have. And I always say, regardless of where costs are, the main thing here is that you really wanna be able to maintain and generate a fund balance in that particular program. 2011, you can see, was kind of a high-water mark year for you, and you did some, have some equipment purchases that year relative to that program. Community Service Fund is next, and this operates on the same idea as that Food Service Fund, regardless of where costs actually fall, the most important thing is that you're able to maintain or generate a fund balance in this particular program. Building Construction is next, and as you can see, it varies mainly because of the activity that's going in in that particular fund for the year, and that is winding down now. And then Debt Service is the next slide, and this one is more or less a byproduct of what you are required to pay each year for principal and interest on your various debt issues. So with that being said, a good year for the district. You have a healthy General Fund fund balance, no financial concerns there whatsoever. I guess the real theme, if we do have one now, is that you've got fund balance. Unfortunately, with the games the state has been playing in terms of their attempts to balance their budget, is that you don't necessarily have the cash to float operations like you would've had they actually been paying you on their typical metering schedule that they do. I think it's kind of a new norm, since the state isn't resolving their budget woes very quickly. So I think we're kind of stuck in this pattern for some time.
What's the split right now? Sixty, forty?
They anticipated it to be sixty, forty, and it actually came out a little bit better. I think it was something around 64, 36, if I'm not mistaken. So I guess if there was any bright spot in the year, it was that they just, it wasn't quite as bad as they had anticipated.
What are the ramifications for the school districts that don't have much of a fund balance?
Very dependent upon short-term borrowing. And it is very lean and mean in terms of finances. It's, especially when you're operating in an environment with declining enrollment, like a lot of districts tend to do, it makes managing fund balance very, very difficult. Any change in estimate, change in projected pupil counts sometimes can mean the difference between having fund balance and being very close, if not in SOD. So it's very precarious for those that are running very lean in their fund balance.
I think it's important also, and maybe you can state this too, Kim, that as the state begins to pay back the shift, is that new money we can use to hire teachers?
No.
Thank you.
They will probably tell you that it is new money, but it was yours all along, and they just put it from one category to another, and you make an excellent point with that.
And then one other point, the only way we can get new revenue, excuse me, the main way is to increase the foundation formula. And so if people, if the state and the governor decide to put money towards the foundation formula or special education, then we can go ahead and increase the revenues. But that's about the only way.
That's correct. Yep. Yeah, aside from significant increases in enrollment, but you're gonna have costs associated with adding teachers and whatnot in that scenario. So that's not necessarily a pure increase in revenue as well as the situation would be if they actually had an increase to the funding formula for you. Any other questions?
Financially, how is this district being managed?
Well, you're sitting good. I work with a lot of districts around the area and across the state, and you guys are doing well. I think to have the fund balance that you have and to be able to also set aside fund balance for those future needs in terms of committing fund balance, I think it speaks volumes in terms of your ability to manage what you have, but yet look out and see what you have in terms of obligations as well in the future, and at least make an attempt to be able to manage those obligations and set something aside for that time when it comes.
And our controller is doing a good job.
Your business office does a very good job.
Well, thank you, and as Howard was alluding to, this has become common form. Every year, the district is required by law to have an audit, and it is a good thing for us to do to make sure we are financially well-managed. And every single year, the report that we get is that, in fact, we are financially well-managed. So I thank you for your time in doing that for us. And of course, I thank the financial measurement headed up by Andy and by Colleen in this district in making sure that we get these wonderful clean audits. That's a big deal. So thank you to everyone involved.
All right, any other questions on this matter? Okay. Next on the agenda is Item 9B4.
We have to approve.
Oh, we do have to approve. Thank you, Mr. Olson. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve our audit report.
Oh, second.
We have a motion in a second. A motion in a second to approve. Do we need a roll call on this one? We don't. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda now, Item 9B, approve the 2012 change orders.
Kevin.
Kevin.
Good evening. Yep, before you, the report on change orders for this past summer. It was reported to Finance Committee. A few questions there, but it went past. Come on to this committee. It is just a report. It's not needing approval, but any questions at this point?
On the Fitness Center?
Yes.
What kind of flooring do they have? I wasn't there for the grand opening. Is it a concrete floor?
No, it is a rubber composite-type floor, two-foot squares that are pinned together. Came on pallets, two-foot squares that were all laid in individual piles.
Was that the floor they wanted? No.
They wanted a rubberized floor. A mondo-type floor would've been kind of the top, kind of their wish list, but we had to settle. We didn't have enough money.
Are they gonna get it eventually?
No, this floor worked good. It's a good floor. It's a nice cushioned, meant for fitness centers. It's a nice floor.
So if I understand right, it's a floor that the weights can be dropped on and it's meant to build the hammer line?
Yep.
Not that that should be tested more often than necessary, I suppose, but...
Yes, you can drop it.
It's built for a fitness center, no?
Yes, you are correct. It is a nice floor. It's a good floor.
Okay.
Yep.
It certainly looks great.
It does look great.
Are we gonna get a final accounting of?
Working on that.
Work, okay.
The business office, the great business office we have, we're working on it.
Because you're closing out everything, right?
Working on it. We still have quite a few punch lists to do, and then we'll see where we're at. Yep.